Good evening. Welcome to the Boston City Council Chambers. My name is Felix Arroyo. I chair the Committee on Labor, Youth Affairs and Health. Today we'll be hearing Don't Get 1775. Hearing order filed by the Dean of the Delegation, Councilor Charles Yancey. It's an order for hearing regarding Viola Transportation labor practices within the city of Boston. Want folks to know that we invited representatives from the school bus drivers' union and they're here with us today. We also invited Viola Transportation. They rejected our invitation and I'd like to read their letter into the record. Here Chairman Arroyo, I'm going to get out my client, Viola Transportation, particularly former General Manager Jonathan Sanders Assistant General Manager of the Boston School Bus Operations, who requested by year before the Committee on Labor, Youth Affairs and Health on November 21st, 2013. After reviewing the notice and legislation enclosed with the invitation to appear, it is evident that the matters to be covered at the hearing concern matters that are pending at the National Labor Relations Board and are the subject of grievances and potential arbitration between Viola and the USW Local 8751. The review of the facts and circumstances of these matters are appropriate for the federal agency charged with the responsibility to investigate these issues, LRV, or the private dispute resolution process that Viola Local 8751 have been carrying as means of resolving grievances due to the providing of collective bargaining agreement. With all due respect, U.S. Chairman to the committee, Mr. Roman and Mr. Sanders were not able to get here and as you know, Viola is the new number of the school bus transportation contract in the city of Boston. Now, which stands in fact that Mr. Roman and Mr. Sanders were not here and the company or its appropriate representatives would appear at some future date at the request of the awarding of authority of the contract signed by Attorney Paul J. Hotnett. We also invited the city, who has rejected our invitation as well, and here in their letter, this letter says, "I write concerning a hearing scheduled from the 121st on Don't Get 1775. In order for a hearing regarding Viola Transportation labor practices in the city of Boston, as you are aware, section 17G of the city charge press and care of the city council from directly or indirectly taking part in the employment of labor, the making of contracts wherein the contract, conduct of the executive or administrative business of the city. C. City Council of Boston versus Mayor Boston, 383 Mass. 716, 1981. City Council of Boston versus City of Boston, 386, 171, 1982. As a subject matter, this hearing falls precisely to these prohibited categories. Realstration is not going to be presented in the hearing, even if the hearing were jurisdictionally appropriate. It would nonetheless be advised to proceed, given the context of pending arbitration and litigation assistance, signed by Bill Seddon Corporation Counsel." So while we invited all three parties, clearly all we wanted except for the invitation, I would say for those testifying now, speaking for myself, I will not, other than give you what they wrote in this letter, begin to guess why they aren't here. I'm happy now to pass this on to the maker of the hearing order, a very good friend of mine and the Dean of the Delegation, Councilor Charles Yancey.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is a very important and timely hearing. It concerns the transportation of almost 57,000 children who attend the Boston Public Schools. It also involves hundreds of millions of dollars of the public's money to provide that transportation. And it is more than disappointing that Viola and the administration is demonstrating a certain level of disrespect and contempt by failure to participate in this hearing. The intent of the hearing, Mr. Chairman, was to provide an opportunity to hear from the administration, Viola, and the school bus drivers, the actual workers, to discern what happened on October 8th and to make sure that the interests of the city is in fact protected. Boston City Council has a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that once a contract is signed by the administration, that the public is getting his money's worth and that services are indeed being provided. There's every indication, Mr. Chairman, that the contractor, in this case Viola, does not take that responsibility seriously and believes that this situation impacts the administration, the school department, and them, but not the children, not the public, and certainly not the legislative branch of government, which has to vote on a budget on an annual basis. And the fiscal year 2014 budget includes the allocation for the school contract. So I think it's irresponsible of the administration not to be here. I think it's irresponsible that Viola Transportation also not to be here and be held accountable for the multi-million dollar contract that it has been awarded. We're going to do some details of that in a little while. I also want to add to the list of individuals who avoid joining this hearing to include another person. His name is Carl Allen. Via email through my chief of staff, he indicates that he's been advised to respectfully decline and questions of that nature concerning this hearing should be directed to their legal advisor. Another instance, Mr. Chairman, where it's obvious that the administration on Viola is not taking the Boston City Council seriously. At this time, I would like to read the actual hearing order.
Sure. A few things I didn't say earlier, just the legalese of the chamber and the rules under which we operate. One, I want to announce that this hearing is indeed being taped. You will be taped and if you are uncomfortable being taped for the record, then I would suggest you do not testify. I will not turn it off. So this is an unfair warning. And this is the notice required as defined in NGL. Also, there was an applause earlier. I suspect there'll be a lot of moments in which people here would like to applause. There's a rule in the chamber that we do not accept booing and because of that, we don't accept applause. And so I would ask that folks please refrain from any vocal demonstration, either in agreement or in disagreement towards any of the testimony. Those are just little rules I always forget to say, but they're in the middle of this note right in front of me. And so with that, Counselor, you can...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Whereas Viola Transportation, before assuming management of the Boston Public Schools Transportation System on July 1st, 2013, they signed an agreement that it would honor the union's current contract and would operate under all terms and conditions. And whereas the United Steelworkers Local 8751, Boston School Bus Drivers Union, since Viola took over, have filed in excess of 75 individual class action grievances against Viola Transportation in violation of the School Bus Drivers Contract, which represents over 35 years of collective bargaining progress in wages, benefits, working conditions, and drivers' rights while on the job. And whereas the Boston School Bus Drivers are hardworking women and men, the overwhelming majority of whom are from Boston's communities of color, and they have a decades-long and proud record of providing safe, professional, and on-time service to the students and parents of Boston. And whereas USW 8751 has a well-known reputation for solidarity and activism with the educational community of Boston, along with the Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts, the Work for Quality Fight for Equity Coalition. With these allies, Local 8751 founded and plays a leading role in the Coalition for Equal Quality Education, an organization that for years has advocated for the rights of our children, fighting to defend desegregation and against school closings and privatization. And whereas Local 8751 has provided labor solidarity in action for workers from the city, the region, in fact, throughout the globe, from the Verizon Telephone Workers to Colombian, Venezuelan, Haitian unions, to the New York City School Bus Drivers and to workers and West Bengal Indians. The Childless Family filed against Local 8751's leaders by Viola Transportation, which specifically seeks to punish the five for their solidarity actions. And whereas the school bus workers on October 8th, 2013, engaged in a protected unfair labor practices activity protest and refused to drive until Viola agreed to meet to discuss the company's failure to adhere to the collective bargaining agreement they signed on June 18th, 2013. And whereas Viola Transportation, in response to the job action, ordered drivers and, yes, truly, Boston City Councilor Charles Yancey, off the property until and under the threat of arrest for trespassing and locked the gates, thus committing an illegal lockout. And whereas Viola Transportation has suspended with the threat of termination Stephen Gillis, Vice President, Pension Administrator, and Key Benefits Advocate, Local Founder Stephen Kirschbaum, Chair of the Grievance Committee, Andre Francois, Recording Secretary and Chief Stewart, Gary Richardson, former Local President and Stewart, and Richard Lynch, Local Founding Member and Stewart. Ever there parenthetically, the sentence order was filed termination did actually take place in case of four of those five individuals. And whereas the five threatened with termination, the School Bus Union five, are collectively responsible for retirement, enforcement of benefits, civil rights on the job, grievance in arbitration processing, from the first step of writing through arbitration advocacy, and the first line of defense of the contract on behalf of the union five. And whereas, United Steelworkers International Attorney Alfred Gordon O'Connell filed a 65-page brief in response to Viola's transportation allegations against the School Bus Union five. The brief argues that the workers were engaged in protected activity protesting unfair labor practices as defined by the National Labor Relations Act. They were then illegally locked out by the company. And whereas Viola Transportation has committed numerous unfair labor practices and failed to respect the role of the union as the employee's exclusive representative. Therefore, be it or that, that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council call a public hearing to investigate the actions of Viola, the Boston Public Schools, and Mayor Thomas Medina, and the illegal lockout of school bus drivers, as well as allegations included in the unfair labor practices charges now being heard before the National Labor Relations Board to determine if Viola is in breach of its vendor contract with the city of Boston and their firm are the representatives of the Boston Public Schools, Viola Transportation, the National Labor Relations Board, the Minero Administration, and members of the public shall be invited to attend. Mr. Chairman, I know that was some of nothing, but I did want to add just a couple of additional The Boston City Council has a proud history of standing with the workers of Boston. So it's altogether consistent that this party passed this hearing order and do other things to ensure that the rights of working people in the city of Boston are respected. For this institution, the Boston City Council, to be once again treated as second-class partners in the government of the city of Boston is inexcusable. No law can be passed in the city of Boston without the approval of the Boston City Council. No expenditure could be made without the prior approval of the Boston City Council through the budgetary process. And I believe that the vast majority of every member of the Boston City Council has a proud record of supporting unions in the city of Boston. And even though the union under discussion today is not a union of city government, they do not report directly to the mayor of Boston, or for that matter, they don't report to the Boston Public School Committee. They report to Viola Transportation, where signed in agreement to enforce existing collective bargaining agreements and contracts. And the allegation today is that they have filed it there. And to be fair, Mr. Chairman, we try to accommodate Viola. We work with the administration and others to schedule a time that's convenient for them, as well as for the general public. And even with that, we were rebuffed and once again disrespected as a burden. Now, the city council does have some remedies. They include withholding action on pending requests from the administration compared in terms of appropriations or even legislation. If necessary, Mr. Chairman, we could file 17Fs to get answers from questions evolving out of this hearing, which of course, the administration is refusing to participate in and taking similar action. But given that this is the waning days of the Minero Administration, and the length of time it would take to prosecute some of those options, I am very, very pleased that you have decided to continue to host this hearing. And that's the decision of the chairs, to continue this hearing after giving adequate notice to the administration and to the contract in this case. Another option that the administration has to consider is whether or not this contract with Viola Transportation should be continued if it is indeed found that they are in violation and have not given the city of Boston redress for the day that our children were not picked up. And finally, Mr. Chairman, on October 8th, I did go to the Freeport Yard and later to the Yard and Melville Cass Boulevard and Washington Street. And every worker I spoke to was willing in his entrance to pick the children up for their afternoon return home. Everyone I spoke to agreed to do that. I personally placed a phone call to the interim Superintendent of Schools, Mr. McDonough, and asked him to contact Viola Transportation so that they could unchain, take the locks and the chains off of those fences and allow the school bus drivers to get back to work that afternoon. We had that agreement with the school bus drivers. But sadly and unfortunately, Mr. McDonough's response was, "Well, the mayor has already issued a statement. He's already told the press that he expects and demands that the school bus drivers return the following Wednesday morning." I said, "Well, then when do they go to work now, Mr. McDonough? Why don't you call Viola and have them allow the bus drivers to pick up our children?" And he was very emphatic, Mr. McDonough, and unfortunately, he's not here. He was given the invitation. He said no. And that's one of the reasons for his day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I'm longer than should have, but I want to put this hearing in context. Thank you very much.
I have a list here of the folks who were first panel. I am going to make no assumption to which order you would like to testify. So please, I suspect you've already read that out amongst yourselves. I want to state publicly, as I said to the Councilor Yancey earlier today, that I could be here until seven. I have no intention of closing this hearing out. It is still in process and he has volunteered himself to continue leading the hearing as the chairman. He meant that we're not done by seven o'clock. That being said, I would ask folks to try to use some brevity and not use the examples of those of us up here as to what the definition of brevity is. But to use some brevity, because I would actually be interested in person in hearing as much testimony as possible, but if I don't hear, I'll watch on video, as I said in this tape. So with that, if you guys know your order and lady, please proceed, say your name and your address for the record. And we'll move forward.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo, Mr. Chairman. My name is Steve Kirschbaum. I'm the Chair of the Grievance Committee of Local 8751, a driver since 1974 and one of the founders of the local union. I'd like to introduce our panel and then we'd like to give our presentation, which would address the questions that were raised by this hearing order brought by Counselor Yancey. First, over here, we have Samir Stanley, long-term driver and one of our leaders from the Washington Street facility. There are four yards throughout the city of Boston. This is Kiet Baptiste, one of our leaders from the Freeport facility and one of our spokespeople for the union. Over here is Andre Francois, who is one of the four fired drivers and union leaders. Mr. Francois is not only a driver for many years. Mr. Francois is the Recording Secretary of the Local Union, the Chairperson of the Civil Rights Committee, the Chief Stewart of the Charlestown Facility, and of now to date, the 172 grievances that have been filed with this company. Over 100 have been filed by Mr. Francois. On the other side is Stephen Gillis, another long-term veteran, the Vice President of the union, the administrator of our 25 million plus pension, our benefits coordinator and handler and advocate, and a full-time officer for Local 8751 and one of the fired drivers and union leaders. So we're going to start our presentation. I think it's important for folks to note, we did bring a few visuals because what we have said all along is what happened to the Boston School Bus Drivers on October 8th was an orchestrated and well-calculated effort at union busting, and we don't raise this rhetorically. There is documented evidence that this company participated in an illegal lockout, violation of this collective bargaining agreement they signed, Article 16, and more importantly, of the United States federal law under the National Labor Relations Act. For those of you over there, you may not be able to see it as well, but you will have some easels there which show you the rebuilt facility over bottom where Kevin Conlon, one of the supervisors for the mechanics, was chaining clothes of the gates at 11:35 earlier at the Freeport Yard, directly after Councilor Yancey was unceremoniously evicted from the property under police threat of arrest when he went to try and speak to the so-called Human Resources Representative, Jen Shaw, of Viola. Shortly after that took place around 10:45, that is, the safety supervisor of the whole of Viola, Justin Maynard, locking those gates. But in order to tell the story, we must step back a little. Boston has always chosen to run its school bus operations through vendor contracts. Since 1974, I've gone through Hudson Bus Lines, ARA Bus Lines, TransDome, ICBM, Laylaw, National, First Student, and now Viola. What Boston does is every three to five years, they put out a contract, a vendor agreement for who will be the management company, a private management company, because the city of Boston has never saw fit to respect us by making us city employees where after 38 years, I would have a substantial pension waiting for me. And as the Counselor Yancey knows, that Counselor Arroyo, two years ago, we finally fought for our retirement with dignity and we'd like to go on record as thanking you two counselors for enabling us to win that. We had said during that campaign that we didn't go to retirement parties, we go to funerals. Because up until that was done, on the day we retired, we lost all benefits, including health insurance, eye insurance, dental insurance, and life insurance. After that change, our successful battle two years ago, with the help of you counselors, we now have our workers able to get retirement with dignity where their benefits, their life insurance, and Medicaid insurance for our folks are guaranteed for the rest of their days. Now, in 1991, after a very substantial strike, and I should mention, in the entire history of Local 8751, there has never been, nor will there be, a surprise strike because we drive the city's most precious cargo. My daughters went through Boston Public Schools and rode on those buses. The drivers here had children on those buses. When you talk about serving the community, take a look behind you and you will see more than any other union in the city of Boston, we are the community. We come from Roxbury, Dorchester, and Mattapan. So we will never do that, nor did we on October 8th. In 1991, there was the last actual strike of Local 8751. It was five and a half weeks. It resulted in an agreement with the then-bus companies, but for us, more importantly, in this contract, which I believe we've supplied, but if you don't have it, we'll supply you with the contract book. On page 144 and 145, it's called Letter of Agreement B, signed with the mayor of Boston, school superintendent, and this union. This is not an agreement with any bus company. It's an agreement with the city that states whenever the city places for bid a new vendor agreement, that school bus company is compelled to accept the 38 years of collective bargaining progress embedded in this 154-page book. City of Boston did that for a reason, to have continuity, to have consistency, to have transition without disruption. When the city put out its bid specifications last spring, probably those who have followed this know that there was only one bidder when they first put out the contract. That was First Student. And the city decided to go out with a request for proposals, an RFP, which operates under different guidelines than the traditional 30B contract. And under that request for proposal, embodied in that bid specifications was the obligation of the successful bidder to honor this contract. As we know, and as has been part of public record, Viola Transportation is a global multinational corporation out of France that has a reputation of poor union busting relations throughout the globe. They have a reputation of disrespecting communities from Boston to Palestine, to St. Louis, to Detroit, to Maryland, in every city across this country. When Viola was awarded the contract, they were not the low bidder. Transpro Logistics was the low bidder. And the city had to explain why they violated their own statutes in giving it to First Student. I believe Counselor Yancey was supplied with those documents today. Now, one of the things that any successful bidder must do is that bidder must file a certification under the bid specs for what they call harmonious labor relations, 2.23 of that contract. Viola Corporation filed such a certification guaranteeing that they had good labor management relations and would continue safely. They are under a legal obligation, not to us, but to us as taxpayers, to the city of Boston and their vendor agreement to do that. They have breached that agreement. In the spring, we started negotiations. In the spring, we started negotiations with Violia Corporation, because they did not wish to adhere to many of the specific articles of this contract, including full payment for our long-term disability, which we had just won in the last contract battle. And for our people, God forbid, any worker should have to go on long-term disability, this is the difference between feeding your family and getting the medical relief that you need, and we could not tolerate them doing any more than agreeing to this. At this point, I’m going to hand it over to Steve Gillis, the vice president of the union, to talk about that transition which led to the June 18th memorandum, which I believe, counselors, you have all received in your packets that Lincoln has graciously given to you, so you should have those. You will see a memorandum dated June 18th, which spells out what we were speaking about, and to talk about that period, I’m going to hand it over to Vice President Stephen Gillis. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, counselors, for hearing us this evening and for inviting Violia and the city, who should be here, because from my understanding of Councilor Yancey’s order, it’s about the contract with Violia and the city of Boston, and from our point of view, the violations of that contract and our contract, which led to Violia illegally locking us out on October 8th, after many protests and lawful protests by our membership. The negotiations with Violia started in April and lasted for three long months. The main issue that they wanted to begin with, the Violia Corporation, was to demand that we, school bus drivers, some of us who have been driving since 1974, many of us have been driving 40, 30, over 20 years, file applications as new hires, so that they could choose amongst us who they wanted. To file waivers with organizations such as Sterling Info Systems, which provides them the right to do consumer credit reports on our families, on ourselves, to go into our social media, to do checks on all aspects of our private and personal lives. And it was a very conflictual, rancorous two months that we went through with the Violia Corporation to convince them that we had been here, they were the new ones in town, and we were not going to fill out new hire applications. That’s how our relationship started, very conflictual. When there was finally an agreement on that in early June, whereby all the members had to do was fill out a one-page simple information form, along with Massachusetts and federal tax forms, et cetera, and to sign a waiver with the former bus company, First Student, to send over a Department of Transportation compliant file, which we all did. We moved on to issues of the terms and conditions of the contract, and it was, from our point of view, very near to a strike situation at the end of June, going into the beginning of July, when Violia was to assume the contract. They wanted to throw out sections of our contract about sickness and accident insurance, they wanted to throw out sections of our contract about getting 60% of our wages for long-term disability, they wanted to change various terms and conditions about their ability to use global positioning system technology to root the roots. We all remember what a fiasco that was three years ago in the city of Boston, when every school bus in the city was late for six months, and it was the drivers through root problem clinics, that is, meetings with the bus company and the school department, one-on-one, were able to fix the roots at that period. So finally, we were able to get from Violia this memorandum of understanding, June 18th, it was right on time, because there was a bid happening for summer work the next Saturday. I can’t remember exactly what date it was, but the Saturday just following, June 18th. The city of Boston had the Violia Corporation flat-rate and root the roots for the summer bid, and lo and behold, this was before they were even in the contract, they had got rid of First Student’s responsibility there, and even before it assumed the contract on July the 1st, the Violia Corporation flat-rated the roots of the summer bid using global positioning systems, that is, they assigned times that were impossible to do, they assigned pickup times one minute and two minutes apart from each other. The very first thing that they did was a complete and direct repudiation of our contract and an agreement that they had signed a couple of days before. You’ll notice in the package that is really a big grouping of class action grievances that have been filed. Steve mentioned there have been 172 so far, just since July the 1st, this is only about 20 of them, and the major class action grievances, but the one that was filed on July the 1st, the very first day of Violia operation in Boston, has to do with this use of global positioning systems to flat-rate the roots, which has meant, not only this summer, but throughout this year, the roots that our drivers, our members perform are getting children late to school for breakfast in the morning, getting kids home late in the afternoon, have a almost domino effect as we do trip one, trip two, trip three, or later in the, later parts of the morning, later in the later parts of the afternoon, to the point where children are getting home hours after school hours. It was just the beginning of the mass violations that happened. Right off the bat, on the first day, Violia Corporation took away time clocks, and they took away driver-generated payroll documents that are established by the terms and conditions of the contract, that we have been using for decades and decades, so that the time that we clock, when we come to work in the morning, when we do our circle check, the time that it takes to get the students to school, the time that it takes to do late-to-school reports and paperwork at the end of the day, this is all plunged on a time clock. It’s the kind of thing that you might have heard about in the news at Walmart, when they took away the time clocks and messed with people’s time, and there was a big National Labor Relations Board case about it, which forced Walmart to put the time clocks back. To this day, the Violia Corporation is not using time clock driver-generated payroll documents, they are using dispatchers to put people in and out on computer systems, which has resulted in weekly mass payroll problems for every driver. If you could look through this packet of grievances that were filed just this summer, and in the opening weeks, they have to do with safety and training, they have to do with benefits that they unilaterally changed and are not paying correctly, they have to do with the company not training and hiring monitors. I’ll end my comments by saying that on October the 7th, two things happened at the bus yards the day before Violia’s lockout. In the morning, at the Freeport Bus Yard, the company called everybody on the radio and told them to come in to see the manager, to fill out a new hire application. The thing that we had spent April and May and June dealing with were not new hires. We showed up, and there was a new hire application, eight pages worth, including the Sterling Info Systems waiver to check into us and our family’s backgrounds, to let us know that they were still going to, even three months into their contract, pick and choose who they were going to allow to work for them and who not. It was one of the most devious things we had ever experienced with any corporation. Secondly, on that same afternoon of October the 7th, they handed out sheets to all of the drivers for an October bid that was scheduled to happen, that slashed and cut drivers’ pay, summed by multiple hours a day, that incorrectly rooted the roots for the October bid, and which violated all kinds of sections of the terms and conditions that they had just agreed to do. So that on the morning of October 8th, when drivers showed up for work, plunged in, got their keys, and noticed that the managers, the top-level managers for both the bus company and the school department were in the bus yards, the drivers told the managers that they wanted to have a meeting, and they wanted a meeting scheduled right then. The bus company not only didn’t schedule a meeting, they refused to even acknowledge the driver’s requests. It wasn’t anybody even from the union leadership, to tell you the truth, it was everybody that you see sitting around here that morning who had been incensed the day before by what was a direct threat to their employment and to their jobs after 20, 30, 40 years of seniority. When the managers refused the meeting and instead called in the highest levels of the police department in the city of Boston, where I ended up being in the Freeport Bus Yard, where Councilor Yancey ended up being, then superintendent William Evans was sent in by the mayor, now he’s now the police commissioner, with large numbers of police to, at Violia’s calling, to not only kick Councilor Yancey out of the property, but to demand that every bus driver who was there, and our vehicles, get out of the property in the morning, well, well before afternoons were scheduled to go out, and threatened us with arrest and trespass if we didn’t do it immediately. And so we had to do it, and we evacuated the yards, and they locked the gates behind us. Safety and Training Director Justin Maynard, you see in the top picture, which was taken by a Reuters news service reporter, was at the Freeport Yard, and, you know, I think it would be well to know who ordered this lockout, from where did it come? The lower-level management told us it wasn’t them, but we saw the mayor of the city of Boston, we saw the highest-ranking police officers in the city of Boston, and we saw the highest levels of the bus company and the school department in the yards at that time. So with that, you know, I think I’ll pass it on to other people on the panel, I appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Evans.